It's now six thirty-one. We're gonna go ahead and start this city council meeting of February the thirteenth. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Cosner.
Here.
Councilman Nestor.
Present.
Councilperson Thomas. Councilman Orchowski.
Here.
Mayor motion.
Present.
Mayor, we note four present and one absent, but okay.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend John Custer to lead us in prayer.
Thank you. Let's pray together. Lord, tonight, we come to you. We have requests we want to present to you. First of all, we'd like to give thanks. You got us through this last year. You walked us right beside us. This coming year, you're with us too, and you have many good plans. Everything good that has happened, we attribute to you. It all comes from you, and it's all good. And so tonight, we give thanks. I have some requests, Lord. We just agree together tonight, especially for Marvin Davis. I pray that you would touch him, heal his body, beloved code officer here and fellow servant. Put upon him healing. And the promise we call upon tonight is when two of us here would agree on earth, agree about anything, you do what we ask. And so all of us right here in this room, way more than two, we agree for this healing. Let him recover, gain strength, be back in his normal tour of duty here. And Lord, I pray also, I just overheard here about Councilman Nestor's mother. We ask you to extend healing to her, touch her, and let her days be good and peaceful. We pray for this, agree for it. And Lord, I ask tonight for all the servants gathered here. Thank you for them. I pray that you would give them the information they need tonight to do the job that they've been called to do. We're thankful they took it up willingly. Ask tonight for wisdom for them, that they could take the facts that you give them, and assemble them, and do things that are wise for this city. We just thank you for your love, and I ask in your name, because of that unending concern, desire for wellness and goodness for this city. Thank you, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, has people had the opportunity to look at the minutes from the December twenty-third in the work session meeting?
She did not do those. So we were gonna do those on the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
All together.
Oh, okay. All right, never mind. Skip that. At this time, is there any public comment on agenda items only?
Ernest Telegraphus, this is for Tony, the CFO. I just got some basic questions. How much money have we utilized so far from the tan note?
Hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, now, if you took a hundred thousand dollars, and that went to where?
The general fund.
The general fund. Now, how on page two, it says that you're paying a hundred and seventy, page three, you're paying a hundred and seventy-six thousand for all invoices. So aren't you seventy-six thousand short?
No, we had over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars still in the general.
So if you had a hundred and sixty thousand, you took a hundred thousand out?
Payroll.
Okay.
Payroll.
Okay, so how much do you have now?
Payroll. I will give you that report. There is, I think it's eighty thousand dollars, something like that.
That's it.
That's left in the general.
Okay, so what's gonna happen next time? You're gonna get more money from the tan note?
As slowly as we can. If I don't have to, we don't have to.
When you take the money out, do they charge you interest only on what you're taking out, or they already charge you for the whole half a million?
No, it's already been, it's already all in our account, so we're paying on the whole half a million.
Okay, then, Mayor, explain to me, what is this new term I never heard before? And that has to do with this guarantee revenue obligation bond for non-electoral debt? What's that, non-electoral debt?
We talked about this briefly in January. This is the USDA sewage project. The USDA offered the city two loans, an amount of seven million five hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. You'll see the first ordinance, that is to close on the first USDA loan. So meaning the city has already spent that amount of money under the PNC interim financing.
Okay, is that already paid for then, the first note?
The USDA loan? No, this is going to refund a portion of that.
Oh, it's refunding?
The city will pay this loan over the course of thirty years at one point.
Thirty years?
Yes, thirty years, at an interest rate of one point two-five percent.
But if the interest rate is one point two, how come you're paying six point something for the tan note?
It's a different type of loan. The second ordinance is to extend the PNC interim financing for the second half of the USDA loan. That is the same premise as what the city did in twenty-twenty-two. It's for seven million five hundred ninety-five thousand. That is to complete the rest of the project. The issue with this is, the project was supposed to be complete by March, but
This year.
This year. But they are dealing with hundred-year-old lines and all the surprises that come along with it. It is a variable interest rate loan. The interest rate is capped at ten percent. The city's only paying interest payments during the term of this loan. They're not paying any principal. The principal will be paid when the USDA loan number two kicks in. Right now, all the work, all the loan work right now is projected, keyword, projected to be done by mid-October.
Okay, so when does this other loan kick in?
This will be October. And remember, the USDA did provide a, there was a five million dollar, four-and-a-half million dollar grant. So there'll be additional work, but that's grant money thereafter.
Okay, with that additional work, could we use that, if you got anything left over, to repair the roads?
No.
No. No. This is sewage work. And you gotta remember, the city's under a consent order from the DEP to do this work, have been for, I think, almost twenty years.
So if you save money from any of these loans, we can't?
I mean, these loans are very favorable, right?
Yeah, yeah, but we can't save any excess?
No. Has to go towards sewage work. It took a lot of work, starting in, you know, twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, to even get to where the city is at today. I mean, you gotta think, this USDA process started three administrations.
One last question for you. Who's the contractor doing all this?
I think there's several.
There's several? There's more than one?
Mm-hmm.
Who's watching all these guys?
The main one is, I believe, MCSP.
Where are they from?
Ohio.
Yeah, I believe Cincinnati. Yep. It's very specialized work. They're doing the centrifugal lining of the pipes. Which ultimately saved the city a lot of money, because I believe several years ago, Mr. Orchowski tasked the engineers with finding out how much it would cost to dig up all these sewage lines, and it was really expensive.
That's because he doesn't know how to negotiate. But anyway.
Look, digging in the ground always costs more.
Anyway, okay, I'm glad you guys are able to answer my questions. Thank you.
I'd like to remind everybody that the only motions that will be made and denied are motions that are financially oriented. The first one is a motion for the first reading and approval to advertise ordinance number, and I don't have the ordinance number.
Twelve-seventy-five.
Twelve-seventy-five. Authorizing incurring of non-electoral debt by the issuance of guaranteed revenue obligation bond in the principal amount of seven million five hundred ninety-five thousand dollars pursuant to USDA loan conditions. Could I have a second? To accomplish the permanent financing of a portion of the improvement of the city sewer system facilities, including but not limited to centrifugally concrete lining the approximately thirteen thousand feet of the large brick truck sewer lines on Third Street, Sixth Street, Ninth Street, Twelfth Street, and renew eight thousand feet of eight-inch to twenty-four-inch pipe with cast-in pipe and replace a hundred and five manholes. Could I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes. Motion for the first reading and approval to advertise ordinance number, and what's this one?
Twelve-seventy-six.
Twelve-seventy-six, authorizing the occurring non-electoral debt by the issuance of a guaranteed revenue note in the principal amount of seven million five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, seven, pursuant to PNC loan agreement, to extend interim financing for phase three of the citywide sewer rehabilitation project. Could I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes. I'm gonna try to explain a little bit about what actually transpired just now. Back in two thousand and seven, the PADP got together with, got together with Mont Valley Sewage Authority as a result of a complaint filed by a local resident to do a camera study of all the pipelines that we have. And they came back, and eighty percent of them were what they call category four or five. Five is immediate failure, four is failure within five years. Now bear in mind, this was in two thousand and seven. Bear in mind that we suffered numerous failures along the way, too. We had a failure that was up on, well, one by the cliffs, one up in town as well. So when, when they did this, they defined a project that was actually four different, four different phases. And I think that they're trying to expand that to many more phases, but four that I'm aware of. One's a city park. That was a problem with separating the sewage from the stormwater. And that was basically done, completed. We're done with that. Phase two is the EQ tank. That's the EQ tank that they've been talking about on Parrenti for a long time. We turned that over to Mont Valley Sewage Authority. We've been waiting on that for many years, and it still hasn't happened. So I don't know what the update is on that. Phase three was the USDA lining. That's what we've been spending the fifteen million dollars that we're talking about right now on. And then phase four was what we used the pin vest for. And you might have recalled, early on in my administration, we did a pin vest project. That was replacing pipe. That was what was done up on Reed and through the park and so forth, where they actually dug up and replaced the pipe. So that was the in-ground digging that we had to do. As things go, administration change, in two thousand and twenty-two, we finally had all the banks lined up. Pin vest loan for phase four was out of the gate for two point three seven million dollars at one and a quarter percent in a twenty-five-year term. Five years for construction, twenty years for payment. It turns out that's the same one point one-two-five, or one point two-five percent regardless. So it really doesn't matter one way or the other. PNC Bank actually stepped up with a fifteen, fifteen million one hundred ninety thousand dollar loan for interim financing that we've been doing. And that's what's been, we're doing. That's what we manipulated tonight with those two ordinance. One was paying it down by seven and a half million dollars. The other was taking the remaining balance and putting it on a new loan that had a new termination date that's thirty months in the future.
Yeah.
It's got a lot, a lot of time left, too. We hope to be able to complete that project long before then. Now, remember the PNC. It had a three-year term. It ran, it was gonna run out on March twenty-third. Now, the lawyers had this all worked out, but the new loan is forty years, not thirty years. I'm badly mistaken. And it's one point one-two-five percent interest on the USDA loan.
It is.
Now, one point one-two-five percent is super deals. In any event, the seven and a half million dollars that we paid off today by doing this, rather than just extending the fifteen million dollars, is saving the city eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents at current interest rates per day. Eight hundred and eighty-five dollars per day out of the line usage fund. So this is just a phenomenal thing. You take the, the interest rate that the PNC was charging versus what we get the new rate, that's eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. So we're doing good there. I think that's really the only thing I really wanted to say about that, is I think that the project is going together quite well. There'll be another discussion item that we're gonna be talking about here in a few minutes that talks about a change order. That change order will be enough money to actually complete the fifteen million dollar project we started on, close out that second loan that we just started today. We should be able to close out if anything goes right and the engineers stay on target by October of this year. So we're actually doing quite well with that, I do believe. So it leads us to discussion of the two thousand and twenty-five rate schedule for the sewer rehabilitation project three, amendment number seven. And this is something I just want to discuss through, through council very quickly. I don't think it's gonna take a lot. The only thing that I have to say about this is that the contract for the engineer is really written such that every year, they can adjust their rates. To me, that means every year, they can come to us and negotiate the rates. And the only thing that upsets me is they didn't come to us and negotiate the rates. They just said, this is gonna be our new rates. And that, that upsets me. But nonetheless, the rates that they're doing are in line with what inflation is doing. So it really, even if they'd have come and negotiated, we'd have come up with probably the same answer. So if anybody has any comments about that, I think that'll just move forward to a, to a motion to be made. Anything you wanna say about that, Tony?
I don't.
Okay, well, let's continue on then. The next one is a discussion on change order five. Change order five is the, the change order I was just mentioning is gonna take us over the line for fifteen million dollars. After that, everything becomes grant fund, and it won't, there's no money to pay back, no nothing. And the only thing is, we just gotta keep following the same procedure to meet the goals for that grant money. The change order is written in two parts. One is a decrease in the, in the project fund by five hundred thousand dollars. And that's really due to the fact that, that we hired inside to come in and do a lot of lines. There were some lines that they just simply couldn't do for one reason or another. They didn't need to be done. They couldn't get, didn't have manhole for them. For whatever reason, there's a half million dollars worth of savings that we got when they came in to do their project. But contrary to that, they're increasing it by nine hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, and that's what takes us over the limit for the fifteen million dollars. That's a lot of work for relining things. This is primarily done at Marion, Mont Raver, and Pacific. There's a few other similar-type roads we're doing. But this is the reason why, when the water company came and dug up Mont Raver, just as an example, we said, don't worry about it yet. Give us the money it takes to pave it, but we are likely gonna have to be doing some work up here. We wanna make sure we get our work done before we dig up a brand-new road. So that's not to say that we're not going to take care of Mont Raver, Marion, and Pacific. It's just that we wanna make sure that we're done working on them. That's what change order number five is really accomplishing. If there's anybody who has any questions on it, I'll be happy to try to answer them, but that's really the, that's the bulk of what that is about. That will move on to a motion in our next meeting as well. The other thing is, we need to create, I say, a police pension board. We need to reinstate it. We need to find somebody that meets the qualifications, the criteria, and reappoint them to
Yeah, it's, um, that's set by ordinance. I think by ordinance, it's council. I believe it's the city administrator, three officers from the police department.
You don't have to have the controller or anything in there?
I don't believe so. And I know Linda's looking through that. She's met with somebody from the police department. I think there's a list of names of who wants to be.
Yeah, there is a couple officers, I believe, when we did this, when we reestablished it before. It was myself, two officers, Councilman Orchowski, Councilwoman Thomas. That was the board.
Okay.
And I can't remember the city admin being there, but that could have been at the time.
I, I know Judith Taylor was there. I don't know if it was her capacity as the city administrator or the city clerk.
Yeah, but I know it was two council members, three officers.
Yeah, the, the entire five are actually there.
Yeah.
And it's, just so everybody's aware, it's to review matters pertaining to the police pension, including any proposed retirements, make recommendations to the city council. And it's a good checks and balances system that needs to be in place.
So the only thing we really need to make sure we do is make a motion to appoint those people at the next meeting.
And I believe your city clerk has those names.
Perfect. Motion G, we can just discard. That has no bearing on anything that we're doing here. And it was not a motion anyway, it was just a discussion item, but that's handled differently. H is a discussion of the proper payment mechanism for the city to pay insurance claims to the city of Menneson Volunteer Relief Fire Hose Number One. That's just simply a motion that needs to be made for insurance claim that was made, and they, they need to be reimbursed. Is that correct?
And it'll be allocated to the city of Menneson to then allocate that to the appropriate fire company. That was the whole thing, to sort of take the whole process and make it a little more simple, that it goes into the city of Menneson general fund, and then it's issued out. So that will happen at the next meeting.
Do you have any questions or concerns about that?
No, I don't, but I do have a question that's kind of off of this topic, but relates to both houses one and two. Do we know by any chance of last year, if we dispersed the five thousand for both companies?
I think we did that through the ARC. Is that correct?
William Hess sent out a letter, and I was just, I was, I can't remember if we already allocated and gave that money last year, or if we just forgot to do it, because I saw that.
I believe we did. Did we not? Did we not?
I thought we did it through the ARC.
Yeah, we did through the ARC.
Okay, 'cause I was kinda questioning why he was asking.
I don't think it was five thousand dollars. I think it was closer to fifteen, was it not?
Yeah, it was more, it was more than we budgeted this year, yeah.
Yeah. Now, now, I kinda took that letter as meaning, where's the money gonna come from, from this year's budget of five thousand?
Uh, 'cause he, 'cause I seen it write, it was like, hey, twenty twenty-four was on that, and I'm like, I thought we allocated money.
And the only thing I can say is, we gotta get some revenue coming in before we're gonna be
Getting everything out.
Anything out.
We generally don't disperse that towards the end of the year. The year two, yeah. Okay. Sorry about that, Mayor.
But, yeah, we do need to follow through and make sure that, that took place. I'm pretty sure it did. I agree with Tony that, that we paid that out of ARC funds.
Sorry.
No, that's what the purpose of this is. So we understand what we're doing here. The next one is a discussion of adding the ability in PrimePay to permit all participating individuals to utilize an email address to email their bills and EOBs to PrimePay, rather than being forwarded to the city and the resulting upload fax to complete the service for them. This would cost a dollar per month per enrollee, for a total of eighty-five dollars per month. Does everybody understand what we're talking about there? Right now, apparently, and I may be talking out of turn, Mike can straighten me out, is a retiree, when he has medical work done, and he's, he's following his insurance claim, he sends it to us, then we have to upload it to the system and go that way. What she's basically saying is let them upload it directly to the system. We still have the ability to review it, to, to, you know, make sure that it's proper, but it eliminates the, a step in the process.
And it's only one dollar?
For one dollar per employee.
Enrollee.
Per enrollee. That's per month. I think that it makes sense to me, but
I don't really, it touches. It depends on how many people take advantage of it.
Well, there's eighty-five people, and she's basically trying to get them all to do it.
If they're all gonna do it, yes.
It's eighty-five dollars, eighty-five dollars.
Two of them do it, it's not worth it.
Right, eighty-five dollars per month, times, you know, twelve months is, is, you know.
And these are for retirees?
These are for retirees.
Mark, you gonna use this? That's what I was wanting.
There's people that are using the PrimePay currently, and that's retirees. It is primarily the police, I do believe. The firemen have their own insurance, their own retirement plans. Well, unless somebody has issue with it, I think it ought to move forward to the, to the next meeting. Tony, your turn.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund in the amount of one hundred and seventy-six thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-six cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda's A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the recreation account in the amount of one thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-five cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda's attachment B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the line usage fund in the amount of thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-three cents. All invoices are attached to the agenda's attachment C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the parks fund in the amount of eight hundred and seven dollars and fifty-five cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda's attachment D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve the transfer of sixty-five thousand twenty-eight dollars and twenty cents from the general fund to the payroll account for payroll.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to move a hundred thousand dollars from the tan note account to the general account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to transfer twenty-two hundred dollars from the general fund to the healthcare fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Do you wanna have a discussion on the next thing? I don't think it should be a discussion. We just do it.
Okay, that's fine. You wanna just move forward to the next one, we'll move forward to the next one. I'm not sure why it was discussion, not a motion, myself, but
That's what I'm saying. Well, that's, that's what happened when Matt and all of them weren't here, and they got rid of GD.
All right, Lois is not here, so we can skip that. Do you have anything you wanna talk about, John?
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't have much, except for I talked to Vitell from WEC about, he was asking about if I had anything about roads that were, I noticed that were popping up, you know, with water and gas lines that were coming through the neighborhood. I just mentioned about the intersection of Schoemaker and Second Street on the left-hand side on nine oh six, where the road is now buckling up and then stepping down. He said he would kinda look into it. I haven't heard anything else. I just know that that particular intersection's really, is highly used, not just from transportation on Sixth, but from our first responders that turn down onto Second Street to get to the stations, the respective stations that they report to. But that's all I really had, is just the buckling of that road. And this is prior to the deep freeze we had, so I'm sure there's probably an issue going on down there.
There's a lot of things that are happening around town right now. We have the road that's kinda depressed on Summit, around Leeds. We have a sinkhole behind the, the, the hall, hall up there that we've got. The point being is, I met with Alvy, what's his first name? Dr. Alvy. He is of the opinion that there is some underlying mine subsidence issues running around town. He's really advocating that we establish a meeting, and we need a, council needs He's really advocating that we establish a meeting, and we need to, council needs to understand this and figure if we want to move forward with it. A meeting that involves inviting Senator Ward, Devanza, and possibly some of the other congressmen and senators we have in the area to come to Menneson and allow him to make a presentation about some of the solutions that he can offer for, for doing this. And the reason why he wants to do this is these are not going to be cheap solutions. They're way beyond our ability to do it. It's going to require state aid to, to address some of these issues, if he's correct. Now, he does have a pretty good resume insofar as he did the, the stabilization before they built the tower right across the street over here. The, the, the Westmoreland County Housing Authority built. They, they, uh, did the stabilization before they built the East Gate building. He did a lot of that. He's been around quite a while. He, he's very well respected within DEP. But, um, I mean, is, is council really thinking that this should be pursued and, and see if we can get him down here and talk to him?
The whole town is under a mind, or above a mind.
The whole town is above a mind, and every part of the town has, has potential for being issues if he can offer us some solutions.
Yeah, and I just, the reason why I brought this up as well too is that's where a previous water line break was at too. So I don't know if that has to do with the water line, so.
That's a good point. Not all, everything is mine subsided.
Yeah. So I, I haven't spoken back from him, but I know he'll, he'll be looking into it. Tony's pretty good at that.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Cosner, we've been working a lot with several different things. You want to try to explain, or you?
Well, I probably could. Um, I'm sure by now everybody knows that we've been working on a four series concerts at the amphitheater at City Park. So the mayor and I have been trying to think, how do we get foundations and grants to pay for this? So last week on Friday, we submitted an application asking for eight thousand dollars to PNC Charitable Trust. Came up with a budget for all the four concert series of a little over sixteen thousand dollars. I know that the mayor wanted to have, have these be free concerts to the community and the Mon Valley and surrounding areas. In order to do that, then we need donations, we need grants, and that's what we're really trying very hard to get. There's another grant through Westmoreland Parks that's due in, in March that we're going to apply for. We've been looking, exploring all areas. We're hoping local, some of these bigger businesses. Uh, because I really don't want to go to the people we begged for, for everything else. You know, some of the, the larger industries, we do have them in Menneson. Hopefully, they're going to be willing to support this. Because then you're going to get people coming to town. Hopefully, they're going to go to the restaurants. And, and really, why can't we be a destination? I mean, I, we are, I feel that what, what Menneson once was isn't going to happen, but we could be something different. If we go to Pittsburgh, we go to Monongahela, why can't it be us? We just have to work together, and, and we believe this is a start to get people into our town. So we wanted everybody on council to be aware of what we've been trying very hard to do, and hopefully, this is going to come off, and then we can do it every year. We can, we can plan a year in advance of how to get the money. And maybe by then, people will say, yeah, they'll, they'll tell us now for next year, we're hoping. But, um, does anybody have any questions about this or what we've done?
I want to say thank you for all, all the work. I really appreciate thanking you.
This is a good project.
Let me make something very clear too. This is, this is a city event. This is a city amphitheater that we're trying to do. This is a city organized thing. We're working with, with, uh, Mon Valley Academy of Arts, a guy by the name of Mark Smith, to help us because he is in the, in business. He knows the contacts for the music and so forth. But in the course of following this grant for the PNC, because it is the city, city council is going to be responsible for how this comes off. I mean, and as such, we basically listed the city, all of the council, as being the board of directors for this event. So you guys have a very direct input to what we're doing here, and, and I really think it can be a very positive thing. I think that it offers lots of opportunities. To that end, this has been in the newspaper already once. We got a phone call from Cleveland Cliffs. They've already arranged to, to become a sponsor of the event. So one of many, but, uh, that's the kind of thing that we're looking forward to is companies to step up that can afford it, to invest in this process so that we can put together this program. Sometime very soon, i.e., this, by the end of this month, we also need to sign a contract with Billy Price to get him reserved for our, our date that we have in, in June. So just make sure that, you know, we understand what we're doing here. We've got the resources coming in and so forth to afford that. That's a three thousand dollar commitment that we need to sign. Right now, we're probably sending it to about a thousand bucks. So we got a ways to go between now and the end of the month.
Is there a particular goal we're aiming for?
Sixteen thousand, few hundred dollars.
Yeah, yep.
I don't think there's going to be a big problem. If we get the eight thousand dollars from, from PNT Bank of their, 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 their grant program, we're more than halfway there.
Has anybody reached out to like, maybe like the credit union down the street?
No, but we need to. There's many businesses. We just have not had the opportunity yet to do that. Everybody from the restaurants, Douglas College, uh, all these places need to be offered the opportunity to participate. And in return for that, we will do what we can to promote their, their business, just as we try and do with Cliffs.
Finally, starting to get utilized more often, you know, um, even like some of the churches, they were want to have like a church service up there on a Sunday or something like that. Or, or any local religious groups or something happening up there. Just be nice to see it brushed off a little bit.
Well, it has some real connotations as far as, uh, you know, get, bringing people into the area too. You bring in a name like Billy Price, you're going to be, be, bringing people in from all over southwestern Pennsylvania.
Yeah.
To Menneson. It's a great time for restaurants to, to, to benefit from, from the additional business, for local stores, and for everybody to see what Menneson has to offer.
Exactly. Exactly. I'm, I'm looking forward to this. I love the music in the parks.
Oh, absolutely.
Explain to us the peace poll.
Okay, um, I had received an email a few weeks ago from Donna Vesely. Probably those of you from Menneson know who she is. And, um, and I knew this, but I had forgotten this, and I'm sure you're aware too of Stephanie Yorchik, who is the, the first female president of Rotary International. She's from Menneson. Graduated from Menneson in nineteen seventy-two. She lives in Cannonsburg. But what they want to do in her honor is to install a peace poll, which I'd never heard in my life. I, what is a peace poll? So I looked it up and they, um, and I guess it's just the, uh, something that's a representation of, of the world we live in. And it's, uh, I guess you look at the peace poll and you just ponder that, how, how important it is that we all get along in this world. And they would have, they, and they wanted to make a big deal about this. They want to bring Stephanie in. They want the schools to be involved and have a really big ceremony to honor her. Which I thought was, I could think of no reason why we wouldn't do this for them.
Yeah.
Um, and at this point, we have no thoughts of where it would be in City Park.
Yeah, I was just going to ask that, where it at?
Even know, because it's been so cold. I haven't made myself go down and actually look at the park to think where would be an appropriate location.
This would be at the parks?
At City Park.
They want to do it at City Park.
City Park. Yes. Um, so that's a thought, you know, if anybody has an opinion of where they think it should be, or where, where the best place, and it's just a, um, like a plastic pole, and it would have a little marker on the bottom in, in, in honor of Stephanie.
How, how big is the pole, like?
How tall? I'm not really sure. You know what I could do is I'll forward all the information she sent me to you, and you can look at it, because they have pictures of other poles.
I would probably say, I mean, everything ends up going to the walking track, but I'd say somewhere maybe there where it has more of a view, where people are walking and driving past.
We're promoting the amphitheater, maybe something up there.
By the amphitheater too, yeah.
Here, you know what? I'm going to pass this down to you. You can just look at it. I just noticed on the back of it, it'll probably answer all of your questions.
That is a good idea, amphitheater.
And again, I think it's a good idea to get Stephanie back into town. She's a member of the Rotary, and again, that kind of contact can help but, but bring positivity to Menneson once again. And again, it shows that Menneson grads are out there doing things. They're all over the world. But.
Perfect.
Um, so there is that. And I also wanted to mention that our community calendar is up and running on our website. If you look on it, if you have anything's go, thing going on you want me to put on, email it to me. It has a listing of the events, and you click on a tab, and you have a pull-down of the months. And on the months, it'll have a little thing about the activities and everything. So that is happening. And, um, the last thing, we're hoping to hire a manager for the civic center, which we, who we need in the best, in, in, you know, very strongly need. And I thought since we're hiring new people, from the very beginning, I would like to see a policy manual given to these people so that they know what the expectations for them are and how to pay for things, how to make the reservations, so everybody is on the same page from the very beginning. So I went online and I felt, found one from another city, and I sort of tweaked it to make it fit Menneson. And I know that, Tony, you got, you looked at it and made comments, and I did highlight the things that I changed that you suggested. Because you, I'm glad you looked at it, because I could look all day and not see those things. So I fixed those. And, um, I'd like to hope that we can get this in place by the time the new people are, are on board, so that everybody knows what they're to do. And because I come from, you know, a classroom situation, I made a nice checklist of what the expectations are, because our city crew works very hard trying to do everything in the town. They, they try hard to keep the civic center clean. I feel, however, it's the responsibility of those people who have the programs in that building, that they clean up before they leave. So I made a nice checklist. I love checklists. And then everybody who's in charge just checks it off before they leave that day, that they've done what's on here. And again, I sent you a copy, so if you think, oh, you forgot this, tell me. Because we all, you know, when I look at things, I think it looks good, and then somebody points something else out. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of, of what I've been doing. And, and I appreciate your comments and straightening me out if I've made a, um, if I've left something out. So that's all I have. Anybody have any questions or?
No, but I got a thing that I want to add to this. Something that just occurred to me is, first off, we need to make a motion at the next meeting to hire this person in persons. And we've actually narrowed it down to a partnership between two different people, I do believe.
Do we need to take a, a motion as well to accept the documentation?
Yeah, well, that would be a motion, yes. But above and beyond that too, we need a motion to, to hire.
Right.
And this would be a, a motion of a higher replacement to what Julian was doing. Right now, Mike's running over there every day, locking and unlocking, and it's just, uh, gets to be very.
Sorry.
Anybody have anything else that they'd like to see on the, the thing next meeting? I do think that we need, and my apologies to, to, to Tony, this, uh, motion to move the three hundred and fifteen dollars. I think that that is a mistake that we made, and I'd like to get that corrected on the next meeting.
We can.
Okay.
Can that go into your bills to be paid, Councilman?
Well, he's already, he already just.
It's already in there.
It's already in there.
But it would just be a motion then? It would just be a motion to reimburse the general fund in three hundred, three hundred and fifteen dollars. Because the grant fund pays for that. Correct. Okay, very good. I do have one question.
Sure.
And that is, and I, I, I understand part of it, but do we have a path or do we have a timetable for hiring a street employee? There'll be another filing of the application process in the paper tomorrow. That was requested by, um, all to bring up the pool of applicants that we have. So that will be in a two-week period, and I think by the time we hit the twenty-seventh, we will have enough applicants to begin an interview process. Then we have people from before? We do, but I mean, we want.
Most of the people from before.
Many of those have been.
They're gone. Yeah, they're gone.
But there's a couple that could still be brought back. Well, my only question is if you're advertising again, is that what you just said? Yes. Didn't council have to make a motion to authorize that first? You just can't author, you just can't do a motion, just do a motion and do it. I mean, it required a motion to, of council to advertise.
Or a purchase order.
Or a purchase order, yeah.
That's the way we did this one, uh, Councilman, it's a PO. Okay.
In any event, I do want to move forward with that as quick as we possibly can. This was really done at the request of a couple of people in the streets department and the union that, that really wanted to see this re-advertised. Anybody got anything else they want to put in here?
No, Mayor. Nope.
Um, I think we're going to, I'd like to make a motion to defer public comments to the meeting of, of, uh,
February twenty-seventh.
Could I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So this will be deferred. In which case, the meeting is adjourned.